Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting at the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. The time is now 6:05 PM on Thursday, October 14th, 2021. This is the first in-person meeting with the full Tempe City Council since I became mayor on July 2nd, 2020, and also I know this is Councilmember Garland's first meeting ever in the council chambers, and it's just great to see the entire council back here together. So although we're allowing in-person attendance, we are also continuing to offer virtual participation options, so the council meetings will continue to be accessible to all of our residents' preferred ways of participating. Since we are holding a council meeting in a hybrid in-person virtual format for the first time, just please be patient if we encounter any technical issues along the way. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks will be required for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex Events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real-time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. First of all, before I invite you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to take a moment of silence here and dedicate this tonight to two individuals who sincerely made a profound mark on Tempe, and they have very recently passed. The first one is Dr. Ralph Goitia. Dr. Goitia was superintendent for over a decade at the Tempe Elementary School District. He led the district through robust population growth that required new construction and reshaping curricula to meet the explosion of new students in Tempe to be served. He served for 17 years on the Samaritan Hospital Board of Directors, in addition to the Tempe Hospital Board. He was an advocate and supporter of Tempe's sister cities, where he and his wife were the original corridors for the Student Exchange Program in Cuenca, Ecuador. Dr. Goitia's service lived beyond the boundaries of our city. As a member of the Rotary Club of Tempe, he formed a committee to purchase used education furniture and material to be donated to Juarez, Mexico. And in 2011, Ralph and his wife Alice were named Don Carlos Humanitarian Award winners amongst the highest honors that one can receive in Tempe. Dr. Goitia was truly a Tempe treasure, and he is going to be profoundly missed by all of us. So I wanted to make sure that I read that this evening, and I also have one more for Pastor Sue Ringler. Pastor Ringler was the founder of the Posde Cristo Homeless Kitchen in Mesa in 1988. She was a pastor, she was a registered nurse. I first met her as the Director of Operations at Tempe Community Action Agency when I joined their board back in 2006, and she was the person whom many credit was spearheading, getting the Interfaith Housing and Emergency Lodging Program, otherwise known as I-Help, running and operational in the city. She was an MLK Diversity Award winner. Around 20 December of 2020, she was unfortunately diagnosed with Burkitt's lymphoma, but still stayed involved, giving her time, passion, and service. She was a member of the Tempe Public Safety Advisory Task Force, and she was part of a special corps of women who created Women for Women Tempe, helping those who experience homelessness ensure that they have the feminine hygiene products to live their lives in dignity. Can you all please, in honor of both Dr. Goitia and Pastor Ringler, join me in a moment of silence this evening? Thank you. Next up, item number two is going to be our Pledge of Allegiance. Could we all please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, we're on to item number three, which is meeting minutes. Tonight, I'm going to be assisted by Vice Mayor Keating. Vice Mayor. Let's try one more time to see. Once again, we talked about we might have a couple of technical problems this evening, so. Vice Mayor Keating, are you there for the meeting minutes? All right, hearing none. I would go ahead and turn over to Councilmember Arredondo Savage, who's right here to my right. Can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you now. All right, sorry about that. It wasn't unmuting me for some reason. One second here.
Sure.
Other screen. May I move to approve items A1 through 5?
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating for the approval of 3A1 through 5. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I will... Okay, we're going to go here and cast our votes. Actually, okay, let's do that. There we go. There it is. All right, so that item passes 7 to 0. I'm going to turn back to Vice Mayor Keating. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve items B1 through 11.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating for the approval of 3B1 through 11. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Let's go back to the screen and cast a vote. All right, so. I don't know who has control of Councilmember Navarro's computer, but give it back. He needs it. All right, so let's do this really quickly. So, okay, so that item also passes unanimously 7 to 0. I'm going to bring in Alex here for the save. Perfect. All right. Excellent. All right, next up is item number 4, 4A's Mayor's Reports and Announcements. First of all, I just want to note that the first one is about the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. We're always excited to welcome new members from across Tempe schools to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. MIAC appointments are outlined in item 5A1 on the agenda. And you can see there on the screen there, some of the newest members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, so please take a look at those. Next up here, we have item 4A2, which is the Tempe Community Action Agency Update Capital Campaign Presentation. I'm going to go ahead and call upon the Executive Director of Tempe Community Action Agency, Deborah Artiaga, to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just testing sound here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you on behalf of Tempe Community Action Agency's Board of Directors, our essential workers, and our volunteers for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Trying to make sure that we can access video and sound. I'm joined today by Electa Thompson, our Board Chair, and Jason Franz, our Vice Board Chair, and I want to present with you some information about our past year of service and our future goals moving ahead. As many of you know, TCAA is Tempe's largest human services nonprofit, social impact organization. And as tonight's presentation will show, we are continuing our 55-year commitment to alleviating poverty, hunger, and homelessness in our city and building greater resiliency through our future strategic goals. Next slide, please. Since our founding in the Escalante neighborhood in 1966, TCAA has delivered on seven main areas of focus, and those are shown on the slide before you. Each focus area includes a number of distinct programs and services. I'll unpack this a bit further in the next several slides, and I may run through these slides rather quickly, but I know you have copies in your packets, and we'll make time for questions at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. Our efforts to improve food security centers around our food pantry. It's one of our oldest programs. It offers nutritious food choices in food boxes provided at the food pantry, delivered to students in Tempe and Kyrene schools, and delivered to the homes of seniors in need. This focus also includes serving nutritional lunches at Tempe senior centers and providing catered meals along with wellness checks through home-delivered meal service offered throughout Tempe. All combined, these programs provided over 420,000 meals to participating seniors, adults, and children in our last fiscal year. Next slide, please. Our community action program has served Tempe households since the late 1960s. In the past year, households that were impacted financially by COVID-19 have been our highest priority. Now, this program typically serves about 500 households annually, and as you can see here, this grew to over 4,700 households served since the start of the pandemic. Our staff has helped to provide an influx of over $13 million into this community through payments made on rent, mortgage, and utility bills over the past 18 months, and the average amount paid per household has been about $7,000 for both overdue and future rent payments. Next slide. Our focus on healthy newborns, infants, toddlers, and their families benefit about 300 households each year. The Health Start Program provides home-based case management, access to health care, including prenatal care, mental health services, counseling services, plus two years of family support to ensure that babies are born and raised in a healthy home environment. Next slide, please. And since our 2018 merger with the Tempe Neighbors Helping Neighbors nonprofit agency, TCAA has expanded help available for vulnerable older adults so that they can remain at home and in the community they love for as long as possible as they age. And while COVID impacted our ability to serve participants in their homes, we still found creative ways to provide social connections, transportation, access to COVID-19 vaccines, and other activities to support healthy aging and independence. Next slide. And the I-Help Shelter Program was also adversely impacted by the pandemic. We had to reduce beds to allow for greater social distancing, but nevertheless, we sheltered 258 adults in the past year, and we added new services for our growing unsheltered population in Tempe, which included opening the Oasis Drop-In Center, which saw over 7,000 visits in its first year of operations. We also added new rapid rehousing services to help with permanent housing placement and retention. Next slide. And three years ago, to reduce reliance on social services and improve financial empowerment for low-income households, we launched Tempe's first Financial Success Center. This program provides financial coaching combined with workforce development and income supports, and this combination of services along with other resources like food boxes or help with household bills leads to improved financial security among participating households. Slide, please. We can't do this work without the involvement of volunteers during and despite the pandemic. Last year alone, volunteers contributed over 27,000 hours in volunteer time. This is the equivalent of 13 full-time staff. For every dollar that we spend on volunteer engagement at TCAA, we realize a $3.30 return on that investment. Slide, please. While these outputs are impressive, what matters most is direct impact, direct feedback that we obtain from customers of our programs. So twice annually, we survey participants across all TCAA programs, and with help from ASU's College of Health Solutions, survey results are tallied and segmented. Our surveys are quite lengthy, but in the next two slides, we provide you with just a few highlights from our spring survey results. We're thrilled to find that we're making a positive impact in Tempe on food security, on increased nutritional intake. In our CAP program, Tempe households are improving their financial situation, and they're extremely satisfied with our staff's knowledge and expertise. And older adults served by TCAA are better able to remain independent and experience reduced loneliness and greater social connections with our help. And on the next slide, we also found that young families enrolled in our Health Start Program are stronger, they communicate more effectively, and they're better able to provide a healthy head start for their newborns. I-Help participants are more confident in their ability to overcome homelessness, and they're taking the necessary steps to meet that goal. And participants of our Financial Success Center are becoming more financially secure and learning how to prevent a future financial crisis. So on the next slide, we show our three-year service trends and the effect of the pandemic, and adding new resources like the Oasis Center certainly impacted our service levels as we assisted an additional 9,000 people last year compared to the prior year, for a total of over 38,000 adults and children served. Just the volume of people living in Tempe who participate in TCAA programs is equivalent to 1 in 7 city residents. In the next slide, we show some data points on our financial strength as an organization in Tempe. We do this work while remaining extremely cost-effective. TCAA's administrative rate has remained below 10% for the past five straight years. We also do this work while multiplying the city of Tempe's investment. In fact, city of Tempe funds represent only 9% of our $5.6 million budget. And on this last slide, this brings us to the present. We are currently conducting strategic planning as we know that our work is far from finished. In the next three to five years, we will broaden our impact while remaining responsible stewards of the financial resources we receive. We will increase our capacity to distribute nutritious food, will launch a new program designed to prevent homelessness among vulnerable older adults, will further integrate our drop-in center for unsheltered individuals with our workforce development programming through a larger community resource center, will increase permanent shelter beds and create bridge housing, and prepare nutritious meals on-site for our shelter and our senior nutrition program customers, and will expand our early childhood development resources through our Health Start Program. And with this, I'm going to defer to Jason Franz, our Vice Chair of Board of Directors, for some closing comments. Jason?
Thank you so much, Deborah. Mayor Woods is seeing council members and city staff. I'm speaking to you this evening as a representative of the Board of Directors for the Tempe Community Action Agency. As you know, our board is made up of 21 Tempe stakeholders representing their neighborhoods, their businesses, and other community interests, and advised Ms. Artiaga and the TCAA staff as they work to meet the TCAA's mission to foster dignity and self-reliance in the communities we serve. It's my great honor to serve on this board as Vice Chairperson and as someone who lives and works in Tempe, and to work with the dedicated staff of this agency that has provided services to our neighbors and community members in need since 1966, serving Tempe and its residents for 55 years. This agency understands the needs of this community as well, if not better than any other organization, and it meets those needs with an incredible level of efficiency and appreciation by its clients, as you just saw. Yet, the demand for TCAA's services remains high, and with many people in our community still unable to find safe shelter, or prenatal care, or that next meal, or the assistance in completing their resume or ensuring their utility needs are covered, but this is not due to a lack of expertise or desire at TCAA. This is simply because TCAA's concurrent resources are at capacity. We, as a board, are committed to expand on these resources so that more people may be served, but we also recognize that we, as the TCAA, cannot solve the needs of our vulnerable community members alone. We've always recognized the importance and effectiveness of working with partners like the city of Tempe. As Ms. Artiaga shared with you, TCAA serves a great number of Tempe's population, 1 in every 7 Tempe residents receiving access to services or support. And our data demonstrates how well TCAA administers its services and provides support with incredibly and consistently high satisfaction ratings in important areas, as you saw earlier, but specifically, 99% of those served worrying less about food insecurity. 97% of Tempe's homeless progressing towards their goals, and 100% of those served worrying less about their child's health and well-being. This satisfaction and this accountability is unbelievable motivation for us as board members to make sure we protect the hard work of this agency and its staff that provides its services at an efficiency rate of 91% of all funding going directly to those the TCAA serves. But again, we cannot solve the needs of our community members in need by ourselves. As a board, we're excited to see Tempe's commitment to address the issues of homelessness and employment, but as residents and taxpayers, we also want to see Tempe work with nonprofits like TCAA and leverage their decades of experience servicing those in need with optimum efficiency. We want to ensure that collectively we work smarter, not harder, forging pathways for each and every one of those who call Tempe home so they can create a life where they may thrive. My colleague and our Board Chair, Electa Thompson, and I are now welcome. Any questions you may have for us? Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Electa. Really appreciate the presentation. TCAA is obviously an extremely valued partner for the city of Tempe when it comes to delivering services to a population that really needs them the most. I was fortunate to serve on the TCAA board from 2006 to 2012, and I can absolutely speak to the incredible work that this board does each and every day in our community as well as South Scottsdale. So just really appreciate the presentation. Any members of council, would anyone like to comment? Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm such a huge fan of TCAA. The fact that you guys are housing 258 adults is amazing, and 1 out of 7 people in Tempe are served by TCAA, I don't think anyone can make that claim. That is very impressive. I also love the outreach to the entire community, including the aging. This service helps our elderly age in place, which is always preferred by them, or mostly preferred by them, I should say. I really want our Human Services Department to work more closely with TCAA, and I think we're moving in that direction, because together, we are better. TCAA serves our residents in an amazing, affordable, and efficient manner. My hat is off to you for your service, and thanks so much for everything you do for our residents of the city of Tempe.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any of the council members have any comments or questions? All right, well, hearing none. Once again, just wanted to thank Deborah, and Electa, and Jason for the presentation. We look forward to continuing to work with TCAA, to strengthen and deepen that partnership, and even, most importantly, just work with people in the community who really are in need of these services. You guys do a phenomenal job, and we're just looking forward to continuing that partnership moving forward. So thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item number 3 here, 4A3, which is the Lights On After-School Proclamation. And I've got that right here. I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas the citizens of Tempe stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, and support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, and build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, and engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, after-school programs have risen to support the youth to recover from these challenging times and also address their academic, social, and emotional needs, especially today when programs are supporting young people and families as they navigate the return to school, and will continue to innovate to meet ever-changing needs. And whereas Lights On After-School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 28th, 2021 promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas the city of Tempe is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that help our children learn and grow while helping them develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Now, therefore, I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare October 28th, 2021 as Lights On After-School Day in Tempe, Arizona. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next up here, we have item 4B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Mr. Ching is indicating he doesn't have any reports this evening, so. We're going to go ahead and move on then to item number 5, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration, and public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card located next to the city clerk over there, and submit your completed card back to the clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion, and I can call your name when it is your turn to comment. I'm going to go ahead and announce that the Consent Agenda this evening is miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A16, awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B23, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C22. Any item with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by the member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, I'll also ask, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a Consent Agenda public hearing item? I just thought you were kind of going for the dramatic pause, so. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it. Okay. Council, are there any agenda items that you would like to remove from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration? Okay, I'm going to pull just one item here, which is item 5A4. Okay. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and look for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. All right, moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm going to go ahead and call for... Actually, we don't need a roll call vote. I'm so used to doing a roll call vote. We have a screen. It's beautiful. All right, let's go ahead and cast your vote. And that item passes unanimously 7 to 0. Next up here is item 5A4, which I pulled. 5A4 is to approve amendments to the Tempe City Council Rules of Procedure related to public comment at council meetings and administration of council committees. This item requires an affirmative vote of at least 2/3 of all council members, which is 5 of 7 votes required for approval. I pulled this item just simply to note that we made a change. This will allow us to make a change, which will allow public comment at the beginning of each council meeting for up to an hour, with additional opportunities to speak at the end of the meeting as well. This change is in line with recommendations that were made from our Equity in Action community initiatives. So I wanted to make sure that I pointed that out, and wanted to thank Equity in Action for all of their hard work in continuing to bring forward recommendations to make the city even more inclusive. So I wanted to say thank you and read that item. With that said, I'm going to look for a motion on that item. So moved by Councilmember Adams. Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. Actually, we need to clear the screen. I'll just leave it then. All right, and that item passes 7 to 0. All right. One second here. All right. Next up here, we're going to go to item 6 here, which is the NonConsent Agenda. All items listed on the NonConsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. First item here, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item under the section is 6A1, which is to adopt a resolution to adopt development fees for fire, parks, and recreational and police facilities. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to look for a motion on item 6A1. Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that motion passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 6A2, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Health Services to accept and disburse grant funds from ADHS to be used for the wastewater data analytics program operating costs. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to look for a motion on item 6A2. Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Let's go ahead and vote. And item 6A2 passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 6A3, which is to award a two-year contract with two two-year renewal options to staffing specialist NV LLC to provide... to provide temporary commercial driver's license to certified drivers to supplement city staff in the operation of solid waste-heavy equipment and vehicles. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Moved, approved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Let's go ahead and vote. And that item passes seven to zero. Next item under the section is item 6A4, which is to approve one-year contract renewals with Baller Holding Corporation, doing business as Baller Equipment and Velocity Truck Centers, for the purchase of solid waste vehicles. Counsel, any comments or discussion on item 6A4? Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. Vice Mayor Keating? All right, thank you so much. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A5, which is to approve an increase to the contract value with Premise 1 LLC for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of building security systems. Counsel, any comments or discussion on item 6A5? Moved to approve by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. We're getting the hang of this thing. I like it. Next item under the section is 6A6, which is to approve an increase to the Omnia Partners Cooperative Contracts with SHI International Corporation and CDW Government LLC for the purchase of software licensing, technology products, support, and services. Counsel, any comments or discussion on item 6A6? Moved to approve by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A7, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with West Coast Arboris Incorporated for tree trimming services for trees in Wright's of Way, Parks, and in downtown Tempe. Counsel, any comments or discussion on item 6A7? Okay, moved to approve by... Oh, Councilmember Adams, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. And that motion passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A8, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with United Healthcare to provide group Medicare Advantage plans to eligible city retirees and their eligible dependents. Counsel, any comments or discussions on item 6A8? Been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A9, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign Amendment 2 to an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Public Transportation Authority for the purchase and supply of transit services for fiscal year 2021-2022. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Moved to approve by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item is approved seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A10, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign operations funding agreement for fiscal year 2021-2022, Amendment Number 14 to an intergovernmental agreement with Valley Metro Rail Incorporated for the purchase and supply of light rail transit services. Moved to approve by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. And Vice Mayor Keating? And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A11, which is to award a professional services contract to Corolla Engineers Incorporated for the granular activated carbon and other improvements Johnny G. Martinez Water Treatment Plant Project, located at 255 East Marigold Lane. Counsel, any comments or discussions?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember QB. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 6A12, which is to award a professional services contract to DWL Architects and Planners Incorporated for the Tempe Municipal Operations Center Project, located just west of 2050 West Rio Salado Parkway. Counsel, any comments or discussions on item 6A12? Been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. The next section on the nonconsent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for November 9, 2021. The first item under the section is 6B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of certain city-owned improved property at the addresses of 2237 East Maryland Drive, 1029 West Fifth Street, Unit 102, 1055 West Fifth Street, Unit 11, 1018 East Henry Street, 1024 East Henry Street, and 700 West University, Units A204, G105, H104, D205, E203, G203, and J204, to the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to convey property, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and related transactions. Quite the mouthful. I'll do it one more time. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak received from the public?
No comments for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. I heard a motion by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Do I have a second? Oh, that's right. It is the first hearing. You are correct. See? Look at that. All right, that's okay, though. We like this item so much, we're just trying to get to November 9. Okay, so, just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 9, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending and expanding Chapter 28 of the Tempe City Code Concerning Solid Waste. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak received from the public?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 9, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a co-text amendment within the Zoning and Development Code for annexation amendments consisting of changes in Section 2-106. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Would staff like to make a statement on this item? Hearing none. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public electronically wanting to speak about this item?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 9, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer unencumbered budget appropriation from the Community Development Department to the Economic Development Office. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak from the public?
No input received for this item, Mayor.
I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, the second and final public hearing on this item will take place on November 9, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer unencumbered budget appropriation from the Financial Services Department General Fund to the Financial Services Department Workers Compensation Fund and increase the related Fire Medical Rescue Department General Fund Interactivity Appropriation and Workers Compensation Fund Interactivity Charge-Out Appropriation for the Annual Municipal Firefighters Cancer Reimbursement Fund Assessment. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak from the public?
No input received for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 9, 2021. The next item under the section is 6B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving and utilizing, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Angels Baseball LP, a California limited partnership doing business as the Los Angeles Angels, a Major League Baseball MLB club. This is a... I wanted to just very quickly thank... And I'll do this again probably at the next meeting. Keith Burke, our Community Services Director. Ken Jones, our Deputy City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, Deputy Community Development Manager, Community Services Manager Craig Hayton, and all the folks frankly negotiating this deal. It's gonna be great to have the Angels continue to play here in the city for decades to come, and we just really appreciate all of staff's diligent work in getting this done. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak from the public?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 9, 2021. The last item under the section is 6B7, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to extend the Tempe Anti-Discrimination Ordinance to cover discrimination based on hair texture and protective styles such as braids, locks, twists, and knots in employment, housing, and public accommodations. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on this item?
Mayor, Janet Kane-Hamlin is present.
Wonderful.
And asked to speak on this item.
Ms. Hamlin, please.
Thank you. I would like to thank you, Mayor Woods and Councilmember Adams, for meeting over the summer to discuss the Crown Act and for bringing this act to committee and to council in Tempe. Protecting against race-based hair discrimination in our city is a step forward. Tucson has outed the Crown Act protection to their city's anti-discrimination ordinance, and I urge Tempe Council to do the same. I hope that other Arizona cities will work to protect members of the community from race-based hair discrimination by passing similar anti-discrimination ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hamlin. Really appreciate it. I wanted to thank you, first of all, for bringing this item to our attention. I know, as you mentioned, you had meetings with myself and Councilmember Adams over the summer to bring this forward, and really appreciate you bringing this to the Tempe City Council. I also want to thank the Human Relations Commission, and also our African-American Advisory Council for supporting this initiative.
And Mayor, I have one virtual speaker.
Yes.
Candace Lindsay.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Candace Lindsay. I've been a resident of the city of Tempe for more than 30 years. I'm speaking to enthusiastically express my support for the inclusion and placement of the Crown Act Anti-Discrimination Act into city of Tempe's anti-discrimination ordinances that are in place. Sadly, it's something that we do have to have conversations about in 2021, but like many instances, we need a law to protect people from discriminatory practices. In this case, due to the way a person may wear their hair. I have had this to be part of my life's journey, dealing with people making flattering comments, et cetera, which I have dealt with, but the thought that I could have lost employment or housing, et cetera, due to my hair choice, is why I'm here to say I support the great city of Tempe, hopefully moving this forward. I'm excited that we can join Tucson in setting its positive precedent, and thank you very much for your affirmative consideration.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lindsay. Really appreciate you being here this evening.
And Mayor, that concludes our public input.
Okay, great. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Any councilmembers have any comments or discussions on this item? This is just the first hearing, but I want to turn to Councilmember Adams.
I just want to thank Janet for bringing this forward to us, and really, it really speaks to the value of inclusion in our residents and bringing things forward that we might not always think of. So, it's a great testament to this communication that you've had with us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember QB?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Adams, for leading on this issue. Thank you so much, and thank you, Janet. You are a whirling dervish in this community. You do so much good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Any other councilmembers, any comments? Just say once again, the exciting thing about this, and I know we're not voting on this this evening. We'll vote on November 9, but at the same time, it also shows once again how the anti-discrimination ordinance in the city of Tempe is a living, breathing document. It isn't something that we just simply pass and walk away from when residents such as Ms. Hamlin, when Ms. Lindsay bring items to our attention that we need to take a look at based on incidents that we've seen take place all throughout the country. This council always works to act to make sure that we are continuously updating these documents to make sure that they are still relevant and that we are truly protecting all of our residents. So I wanted to also point that out as well. I will go ahead and close that, and reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 9, 2021. Next up, we have items for second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced on September 9, 2021, and final votes on these items will be taken tonight. The first item under the section is 6C1, is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for co-text amendments to the Zoning and Development Code consisting of corrections and clarifications to Part 2, Establishing Zoning Districts, Part 3 Land Use, Part 4 Development Standards, Part 5 Overlay Zoning Districts, Part 6 Applications and Review Procedures, Part 7 Definitions. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any request from the public to speak on this item?
Mayor, I do have one card that's requested to be read into the record.
Yes.
Comes from Merrill Darcy of Riverside Neighborhood. Merrill writes, "I commend the planning department and various committees in the final drafting of this amendment, which will set more standards. In particular is the defining of the specific boundaries of the city center, which is necessary and establishes specific guidelines. However, the mixed-use standards is a blanket approach with very little differences between MU1 and MU4, other than density. The concern is the unrestricted permissions of alcohol production on premises on all mixed-use designations. This needs to be evaluated for separate consideration and perhaps only apply to the lower density of MU1 or MU2, and only outside of the city center. Allowing unrestricted permissions of alcohol production without a use permit on mixed-use properties will be ripe for abuses and result in numerous and unforeseeable problems. Please give thoughtful consideration of what you're approving here. Send this back to planning." Mayor, that concludes the public input for this item.
Thank you so much. All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussions on item 6C1? Yes, Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, just a quick question with planning. What does this actually do with breweries or any of that nature? If there's anything that coincides with people doing business within the city?
Here, Councilmember Navarro. The new definition of the alcohol production was a way to encapsulate all types of aspects of a bar that might have a brewery or distillery component. So, that's the permitted ancillary component of it. The requirement that requires the use permit process is the bar, the main use for the property.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Really appreciate it. Any of the councilmembers comments or discussion? Okay, it's been moved to approve by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. Is everybody's screen up here? Yeah? Mine's not... Mine's not up yet. All right. All right, so just to keep these... Just to keep these moving on here, I will go ahead and take a roll call vote, especially since I can see everyone. Councilmember Adams? Councilmember QB? Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
He came up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh! All right. All right, we vote this way, then. Look at that. And that item passes seven to zero. Kind of enjoyed the roll call vote, kind of kicking it old-school for a second. All right, item 62, then.
Might be able to go back old-school here.
Up there. Okay, item 61 passes seven to zero. Next item is item 62, which is to hold the second and final public hearing Next item is item 62, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company over certain city-owned property identified by APN 124-34-020, which is the 505 South Hardy Drive, Hardy Maintenance Yard facility, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land identified by APN 301-03-004C, Kuanis Park, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved to approve by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Verizon Wireless Communications for a cell site located in the Salt River Project easement on the north side of Tempe Town Lake and the execution of related lease documents and memorandum of lease. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public wishing to speak?
No comments received for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, I'll look for a motion on item 64.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember QB. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. And that passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 65, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to administration by amending Article 3, Section 2-131 relating to departments, by amending Section 2-144.2 relating to the Sustainability Office, by amending Chapter 2, Article 5 relating to boards, commissions, et cetera, by amending Section 2-375 relating to the Tempe Sustainability Commission, by amending Section 2-377 relating to powers and duties, and by amending Section 2-378 relating to meetings. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address? Yes. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak from the public?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, it's removed by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item number 7, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'm going to call on council members for their comments, and I'm going to start tonight with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have several announcements this evening. My first announcement is game night is Saturday, October 23rd. So, each neighborhood decides how our community wishes to celebrate this day. Some neighbors are gathering outdoors on a small scale, some on a larger scale, others are collecting food boxes for those in need, and some are postponing until they feel like it's a little bit safer from the COVID. Please visit tempe.gov/gain for details. The second announcement, Tempe Center for the Arts is back. Very excited about this. Please join us and welcome back and celebrate TCA's return with Grammy Award winner artists, new programs focused on emerging local talents, and interactive artist series. Please visit tempecenterforthearts.com for the event calendar. They do have a lot of events coming up now. My third announcement is, with the weather cooling down, it is a perfect, it's perfect weather to see a movie in the park. We have a great movie lineup. October 15th is Shrek. October 22nd is Frozen 2. The movies begin at dusk in the North Soccer Field on Baseline Road and Ash Avenue. Please visit tempe.gov/movies for additional details and further movies in the, in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Hey, she skipped right over. I was talking to her, but I'm going to be right now.
Give me just a second. Says Jason. You know, it's not as cool when you don't have your graphic, right? So, I have the utmost faith. I could guess which one he's going to pull up here, since I only have like eight.
Okay. No, eight is fine. You ever take one or two?
Yeah, that's absolutely great. Just so everybody remembers, this weekend is the half Ironman, so we are very excited to continue to have a relationship with the Ironman. As you see, they've been around in here for a very long time. Going to have several participants this weekend, the 17th, so hopefully you guys, one, first just know, and know that there will be a little bit of traffic situations out there, but also if you get an opportunity to support and cheer these individuals on, these participants, it's a lot of work, and it's a pretty amazing event. So, if you get a chance, check it out. It's really great, and just want to say thank you to the Ironman for their continued partnership. That's pretty awesome. Thank you, Jason. And then, of course, as you all know, the weather is nice, like Councilmember Adams said, and one of the things that comes up during these nice fall times is Veterans Day. So, we are bringing back the Veterans Day Parade. I want to just give a great thank you to Jim Grohn, who Jim Grohn has been the chairman of the Veterans Day Parade for over 30 years. He is an amazing individual, and I just want to say thank you to Nikki. I know she's here, and also to Johnny, who has been working really hard, and Parrish, and Tim. All of you really working hard connecting with Mr. Grohn to ensure that we have a really great, safe parade, so put that on your calendars. We are going to have it on November 11th. We're looking forward to it, and so hopefully a lot of people will come out, and if you go to their Facebook page and you have a group or an organization that you would like to participate in, they do have a registration, a little sheet, and I want to say thank you to Parrish first and foremost, because he has agreed to emcee once again, and so we're looking forward to a really great fun Veterans Day Parade. Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Next up, I'm going to go to Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one slide. Oh, there it's coming. I just wanted to invite everybody to the Human Services and Community Safety Committee meeting that I host, co-host with Councilmember Joel Navarro. It is on Friday, October 22nd at noon. We're going to be going over Tempe PD and ASU de-escalation research, social detriments of health, hometown for all, ordinance on tobacco vaping flavors. So, we would like you guys to join us. It'll be virtual. We're hoping that we're going to go live or hybrid in January, but this will be virtual, so I hope you can join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, we're going to go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple items. One is connecting with QB. My event is now in person on October 23rd on Saturday from 10:00 to 11:30 in Deli Park, so just meet by the tree. Everyone knows that tree, and you know I'm a tree hugger.
That is a great photo, by the way. I just have to say.
That was taken the day before my husband was going to cut down one of our mesquite trees, and I said I would go and tie myself to the tree and chain myself to prevent him from cutting it down. He said, "You can't do that to your husband," and I said, "Oh, yes, I can." Anyway, thank you. I'd love to see everybody. It's been such a long time, and I really, I'm really looking forward to being with people in person and hearing about their issues. No, no set agenda, just want to hear what's on people's minds. Next is Sue Ringler, who we lost yesterday, and Cory, I know how much Sue meant to you, Pastor Sue, and I've been reading some of the commentary in Facebook, and her family was calling her Tsunami Sue, which is so appropriate. They said, "She's a tidal wave, a tsunami of love and action, sweeping outward and over and through barriers and resistance. She made good trouble, as we know." And I was looking back in the correspondence we had with her, and in April she wrote to us, she was in stage four cancer and suffering, but she was already preparing for feeling better and knowing that she was going to be up and around, and she was suggesting that we speak to congregations about permanent space in their facilities, and, which was the original intention of IHelp, which she helped to operationalize, but, you know, working with Jenny Norton, they were the first women's seminarians, I think, in the state of Arizona together, and she wrote to us, and she said, I was so struck by her words. She said, "Churches and other faith-based institutions are in need of change. They have to move from money, members, and marble to meaning, mission, and ministry." And she called on us to start those, that sort of soul-searching, and to urge institutions to rethink their buildings and their space. And she also talked about your Public Safety Advisory Task Force, Mr. Mayor, and how proud she was to be on that, be on that task force and look at those ideas, and she said, "We are a compassionate, communicating, caring community," and she wanted Tempe Interfaith Fellowship, which she led, she led, she wanted them to help with a new vision that you sparked in our city, Mr. Mayor. I just want to quote one more thing from Jenny Norton. She said, "Sue was a magnificent soul, and she was feisty as hell, and we're going to miss her so much in Tempe and in our, our larger community. Rest in peace."
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Graphics, the original coffee talk, Mayor. The job was Joel.
Wow! Wow, my goodness.
Throw it out there, just so you guys understand.
We're going to be talking about policing accreditation, de-escalation from ASU, and ASU's research, and it's going to be on Wednesday, November 3rd, from noon to 1:00 p.m. at the Gold Bar Cafe. I do believe, are we going to have the virtual possibilities or not? We can't, because we're in a public restaurant, right? Yep. So, please meet us there if you can. We'd like to reach out to the community firsthand. It's great to be back in person, so to speak after COVID. And so do, attend November 3rd, noon to 1:00 p.m. at the Gold Bar Cafe on Southern and McClintock. So, we'll see you out there. And one more thing, Mayor, I kind of want to do this. I want to bring back the Tin Man. We're talking about the Ironman. Yeah, 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 yeah. Check it out. One tenth of the Ironman. So, we swim, what we do, we bike.
Wait, are you, are you, wait, are you, are you, are you challenging me?
Now, listen here, Mayor. I do got a knee replacement, but I'm still going to do this thing. Shoulders are up next, and, but I think, I think we've got a year, a year from now to probably bring back the Tin Man. I do carry and I do hold currently both of the belts of the Ironman, or I'm sorry, Tin Man. It only happened once, and it was the former, former mayor who I beat, which I don't know if he's out there, but it'd be kind of fun to have him back, too.
Oh, you know he's watching.
So, I'm just putting that out there, Mayor.
So, so for the record, if anyone ever wonders if these things are scripted, they are not, because I had no idea that Councilmember Navarro was going to say that. But here's the thing, as I'm getting older, I keep thinking to myself, like, I feel like I'm being baited into something that I have no way of actually beating Councilmember Navarro at, but my, but my thirst and hunger for competition forces me to say yes to his challenge, because I just simply, you know, on public TV cannot just, I can't lose like that. And if I lose, it's fine, but I can't throw the towel in public. So, Councilmember Navarro, we should talk about this, but you are on, my friend.
I'm going to invite all of the three stations here in Arizona, maybe four, to, and more, to participate in the viewing of the Tin Man.
You mean, you mean the viewing of my defeat?
I don't know about that. And you have, I can have a proxy, because I have one leg.
All right. All right, you heard it here first. Councilmember Navarro, anything else on your end?
No, that's it.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, and just a couple of announcements for me. Just wanted to announce that the Tempe Center for the Arts has just announced their new lineup. We've got some really exciting shows coming right here to the city of Tempe. 48 Live, which opens on November 5th and 6th, will be at the Tempe Center for the Arts, and will take over multiple spaces indoors and outdoors at the TCA. Following the TCA's reopening after an 18-month break, 48 Live will be a big thank you to our local community as well as our local artists. The festival provides a new home for local creative voices, and will feature new work, exciting energy, and all of the Valley's favorites, as well as so many new voices that are going to be added to the mix. So, come out and check out 48 Live, November 5th and 6th. And just once again, for the Tempe 150th Celebration, otherwise known as Sesquicentennial, that's going to be on November 7th. It's a free community festival with two stages of live music, including special guests, the meat puppets. There will also be hands-on activities, made-in-Tempe vendors, food artisans and artists, and of course, fun for all ages, so make sure you bring out the family, friends, neighbors, everyone. We're also going to be opening up Tempe's time capsule for a look inside. So, please make sure to come and join us. The thing that I'm, I'm looking forward to the most is taking a look at a letter. I know that Mayor Neil Giuliani put in that time capsule back in 1996, so I am very excited to open up that letter and see what Mayor Giuliani sort of foreshadowed for the future here. So, so please come out, once again, November 7th. It's going to be a free community festival, and once again, I'm going to say it, celebrate our Sesquicentennial. So, twice in, twice in one announcement. All right, so number, item number eight here, public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. During the public appearances portion of the city council meeting, whether scheduled or unscheduled, the council was prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of the public appearances portion of this meeting, individual council members may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, or may ask staff through the city manager to review a matter, place an item on a future agenda, and however, members of the city council shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during public appearances unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Please refer to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-431.01H for more information. Scheduled public appearances tonight, we have one scheduled public speaker, and that's Deborah Zajac. Money and intention, is Ms. Zajac available?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Ms. Zajac, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Deborah Zajac, and I'm a resident of Cavalier Hills in north-north Tempe, and I wanted to address two items. Number one, money and intentions. First, money. As a resident and not an elected official, I have the luxury of focusing on only those issues that interest me, and my main focus has been development within the city of Tempe. But you, as elected officials, had the campaign, and campaigns cost money. Developers and development attorneys and their family, friends, and associates contribute heavily to your campaigns, if not also for private celebrations. Now, I understand it is only human nature to want to help those who have helped us, and my current concern is with the recently announced RFP for the Coyote Stadium, which brings into play another industry with deep pockets, and that is gaming. It is not just the stadium, but what is being referred to as the Tempe Entertainment District, which would include the recently legalized sports betting. I'm concerned about the effects of this new influx of money could have in influencing our elected officials. This gambling, gaming gambling issue is not something that I'm hearing much about, which brings me to my next issue, intentions. Whether covert or disingenuous on the part of developers and the apparent unwillingness of the mayor or council to address this directly during the public forum of a council meeting. If you saw the initial meeting of the DRC for Carvana, the presentation was stopped to review the size and amount of spaces and the parking structure, which would interfere with the planting of shade trees along Priest. Most developers asked for less, not more parking. At that time, the Coyote RFP was not public knowledge, so the commissioners were not aware of what was in the works, but the developer and the law firm representing them were aware of the proposed project and planned Carvana accordingly. During the September 9th council meeting for Carvana for zoning, Ms. Rydel alluded to the attention of, to the intention of the parking structure being used for event parking by referring to, and I quote, "what might happen across the street." I quote, "what might happen across the street." The timestamp for this comment is about 36 and a half minutes into the council meeting. During a recent conversation I had with a council member, they even said that Carvana is taking a flyer by building the large parking structure. This shows direct knowledge that the real intention of the parking structure was event parking. So, why not just state this clearly during the council meeting, since Ms. Rydel brought it up in the first place? This increased parking was not related to the need of the Corpus Campus. I just don't get it, and I don't think I'm alone. By directly addressing in a public forum these covert or disingenuous intentions, you would let the developers know that you know the game they are playing and have the political will and courage to address it openly. I also believe it would help residents develop greater trust in their governing institutions and elected officials, something I think that is sorely needed in our current political environment. Thank you for this time.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Zajac. Really appreciate it. All right, that was the only item under scheduled public appearances. Next up, we have item 8B, which is unscheduled. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? If so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mayor, I do have one comment to read into the record.
Yes, please.
Comment card from Kelly Marie, representing North Tempe residents. Kelly writes, "Dear city council members, I am reaching out for a status update on what is being done to combat the motorized vehicles, including motorcycles, go-karts, and dirt bikes that are driven and raced on the Indian Bend Wash Path and the Tempe Town Lake paths. It was mentioned almost a year ago that signage and/or cameras were going to be put up for the safety of pedestrians, but this has not occurred. Residents of North Tempe would like to know what is being done to address this matter.